They'll go to the power.
Good morning, everybody or afternoon, because I think it's just gone. Um, welcome to the meeting started at twelve o'clock on the tenth of February twenty twenty two. So I'll start off with um decorations of any discos or peculiary interest, please.
Don't own anything.
Um apologies.
Number six, thank you, absence, yeah, uh councillor Parker.
Has councillor Parker ever attended a cemetery meeting?
Yeah, just one, just one, I think.
Yeah, I think he's on the list there, it's one, one I can add in.
I haven't got in yet, I don't know.
Okay, so mov- moving on, move on to seven four seven stroke twenty one, actions from the uh previous meeting, so cemetery.
Oh, I'll take that one if you want, um so um basically, we spoke about um uh the works yard, the orchard garden and the proposed chapel toilet site. Um I'll cover two of those in a in a agenda item later on in the meeting, but just to give you an update on the works yard. Um so happy to report that um it's ninety percent completed, as you can see from the slides on the screen. Uh the area has been tarmacled, uh the container office has been moved, so these um photograph in the bottom right hand corner, if you look at the screen, is actually on the foot, the sim uh concrete footprint of the old container site, so that's now being used for some of the heavy uh slabs and things, that's that's ideal to do that. Uh the old shed site uh has been demolished or the old garage, and we use the footprint of that to move the container. If you remember when we visited the site um a few months back, uh prior to the works, uh the electric cabling from the the um the circuit board to the container was was not ideal, uh so um by moving it to where the garage is, where the um sort of electric infrastructure comes into that part of the cemetery location, it's a lot more um health and safety compatible combined, so I was really impressed when I went up there, everything is is really tidy, um it's uh it's it's a it's a really good works yard. The old toilet block that you see in the background of the the bigger photograph, that's where the other ten percent of the work is going to be done, it's now being cleared out. Uh the final bit is is the shower bit, so it has had an upgrade of where the old office was, because we don't need that now. Um so it tells me there's the last little bit um to um sort out the shower facilities for the work staff, and we're there. But I think it's a really neat and tidy area, um Graham and Nick and Carl and Chris have kept that that really, really tidy. Uh I did swing by this morning as well, just to make sure that these pictures were still relevant, I didn't want you to go up there tomorrow and see actually the pictures were taken when it was really nice and tidy, and now it's gone back to the scruffiness, it's exactly the same, so they're really really reveling in the uh in the improvement of the workshop, and I think it's working well for them, so.
So going back on that, um you're saying that the shower room is made during the.
The shower room is is is.
We're budgeted for that, we haven't got to worry about the budget for that.
No, so it's all within that budget, we agreed to do the workshop, because if you remember, the workshop was the project that we we picked as a priority. Um and it's now been completed, so that's great.
Ten percent, and in the estimated time?
Well, Nick says that um he's going to chase the contractors uh to see uh when that will be done, I'm hopeful, I think because we moved this meeting from January to uh to today, we've still got another meeting next week, so ho- uh next month, so hopefully when we meet again next month, we can we can say that it's been closed, put to bed, I think there's not much to do, so it's not going to be a big job. The main stuff has been done, I was pleased to see the container has been moved and uh and all um all the services put into that, so that's really good.
Yes, cemetery officer, I think that'd be nice to have in the annual report that the workshop is.
Yep.
Near inclusion.
Near near completion, I just think that's something that could be added in. Um any further questions, um councillor Hodgson?
Um yeah, it's looking really good, and I'm really pleased that it's done. There was an issue um that came up a few meetings ago about um the fact that we spent a cemetery reserve on the workshop, which isn't really part of the cemetery, and I'm not sure whether that, have we got followed up or?
It was followed up, I I followed it up with the uh the the senior management team, uh and um I'll tou- I'll touch on, I'll touch on this when we go on to the committee priorities, but uh the long and the short of it is uh no, it's part of the cemetery location, it's part of the budget, unfortunately, that money has gone into doing these improvements.
I I I did try, that's what the sum of the meeting is, but that no, maybe the toilet and the shower should be a meeting as well.
So we made a mistake by pushing this as our priority.
In one way, yeah, um councillor.
Yeah, I'm really chuffed now, because it's taken us a while to get this done, it was one of my major bugbears. You know, really lucky bugbear, as soon as we get the toilets then complete the better, but I would like to also make another comment, you've missed a minute.
I I was gonna say, did you, did you have to highlight that? I was gonna go back to that.
Wave it on, Dave.
I I did notice that, and I was like, no one's noticed, I'm just gonna go back as soon as we've finished on the slide.
Congratulations to the doing, we just had them.
Yeah, absolutely, well done.
Um because this is action from previous meetings, is there anything that you've got to add, Kerry? Any actions, no? Okay.
Sorry, can I ju- can I just reiterate what Chris has said, and just um and just actually uh name Nick? Nick has been the real driver, I mean, you you are absolutely right, Chris, it's taken a long time to get us to this stage, and Nick has come into his new post and actually driven a lot of projects, this being one of them.
Can I make a suggestion, Chair, please? That we 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 acknowledge Nick i- in a written form of some sort.
Yeah.
A letter saying, thank you very much for for your input on this and everything. If it could come from the chair, it would be nice.
Doctor doesn't want to rise.
Yeah, and there's no money involved.
Do you need need me to add that into the letter?
You can put, we spent it all. I I think we should acknowledge.
Yeah, the ki- the committee gives thanks.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
It's hard work.
It's hard work, not not by listening to any of the other officers who put into it, but Nick's special.
Actually, to be fair, I would go even further, as well as Nick, the whole cemetery committee.
Not the committee, the officers.
The opposite, I only commit, we've worked out.
You've driven the priority to be fair as a committee.
Okay.
The officer that's really driven the priority.
It it's the officers that put it in place, yeah, they do the work.
Can't pat shelf on the back, Chris.
We can't congratulate her, I said.
Okay, no, we can't. Listen, we're going back to seven four six stroke twenty one, and it's to confirm the minutes of the full count, no, it's not, it's to confirm the minutes of the committee meeting on the eleventh of December.
November.
November, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's one, yes. Let's say page one.
The PMP for, the PMP for full councils, so um the past so, I say, ask them.
Well, can I just, I'll point out under my, it's just one little bugbear, it's a bit difficult to picky, but I think it's important. Um and it's hard before, but under five four four twenty one, uh the spelling of internment is internment.
What number is that, sorry?
Uh five four four stroke twenty one.
Yeah, internment.
It's got, it's got internment there, rather than internment.
That's important.
We're not putting people in prison.
Okay, we could note that before.
Yes.
This is being recorded by.
So do you want me to sign them?
I'll get you, I'll get you an initial of changes in the spelling.
Okay, thank you.
Apart from that, I think so.
Yeah, well spotted.
Right, so we now move on down the page to seven four nine stroke twenty one, is the financial update, to receive the financial report for the tenth month.
Okay, so um the the financial report was circulated prior to the meeting, so uh just to start with, I mean, have any of the councillors any questions, and then I can pick up one or two points if you wish. So.
I think you've already read most of these.
Yeah.
O- over the last couple of days.
Last night.
So we've got the income slide up at the moment, and the expenditures slide as well, so we can have a flip between them if you wish.
Did you do Kerry's cemetery report?
No, we might go back to that as well, that's why I thought that was absent on this PowerPoint.
I did ask you, didn't I, Kerry?
Well, we'll go back to that.
The three offices, offices update.
We don't mind, I'm in control of the PowerPoint, so we can move between the two chairs, no problem. So any questions on the financial report? So I just wanna just pick up a couple of, uh we've just, um the income is not quite um up to what uh the budget revised budget target was, um and that's something really outside our control unless we will become serial killers and things, but um but we are, but obviously um in relation to the income is the expenditure has been kept under uh control, and we still are looking to make a slight um net profit or surplus, not profit, surplus to um the revised budget target. So at the moment, we're about two and a half thousand pounds over, um so there might be an opportunity in uh future meetings, possibly next month, I think it's probably our last one before, so we can look at that and maybe as all the other committees are doing, looking at some of the underspends as to how we can um best utilize those into next year's budgets.
Jenny, you have a question?
Yeah, you've got cemetery maintenance there, spending much lower than budget, is that on repairs or is that on general maintenance for the um cemetery?
So it is, it is general maintenance as well as uh um as repairs, you you see that there is also uh a differentiation between the cemetery and chapel, so um I I'm sure we have spent some money on the chapel, we've certainly installed uh an out- an outdoor uh outdoor light um that's not shown in the actual budget. So I think you may ma- may have amalgamated them into two, but certainly we're under budget maintenance at the moment. Uh but we then go, we start grass cutting and things like that back in March, so we might have a little bit more expenditure to kick in, but certainly we are under budget at the moment, so.
So if if when we was talking, the Abbot Down personnel, we was was talking about changing things inside the chapel for environment, so that the heating and the lighting, does that come out of that budget or does that come out of somewhere else?
Um it's a bit of a difficult one, because most of the uh environmentally um friendly uh rip- improvements are pushing through um personnel and uh and properties. So I'm not quite sure, uh because I was told yesterday that that particular committee is now going to change all the lighting in the guildhall to LEDs and it's going to come out of their budget, so so I think we need to push forward with, if there's anything like that that we can look at in in the cemetery chapel, we need to make sure that they're aware of it and can put it into the project priorities.
I mean, we did make guildhall the priority o- over the cemetery because it's used more.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's obviously it we need it more than the guildhall, cost effectively. But looking to the future, I think it's something that we can um have as a priority as and when, not, you know, it's not something that's got to be done next year or, but when we can afford to do it.
As a council, we've made a commitment to look at all our areas anyway over every other time, but obviously the Carnegie and the Guildhall is are the biggest venues at the moment, so we're looking at those first.
Yeah, absolutely. Can I ungrave digging for the line, we're over budget, um is that because we had more burials than we were expecting? Or is it because we're not charging it or we're not?
Well, we're slightly, we're s- we're slightly over budget um to uh to the monthly breakdown, but not in the overall. Uh we're still slightly under the overall annual budget, we've only got a couple of months to go, so we should be okay, I'm not too sure how many we've got. Uh there is a an issue, we've been told by um the contractors that they they want to increase the grave digging fees. Uh it's in line with some of the other town councils to be fair, so I think it's going up from two hundred and seventy to three hundred, isn't it? So it's, it's, it's not, it's not a huge amount, um and there, yeah, so we're we're looking to make sure that we can cover that in our new budget.
Councillor.
The grave digging though, but the grave digging, they, you pay for that as a separate thing, don't you? Is that in the cost for the, when you? That's included in the internment fees, isn't it, but it's listed as grave digging on your
Yes.
On your bills, yeah. Right, okay, so really, if that's gonna go up, the fees on that, that will automatically go up for the grave digging on the, on the, on your bill at the end, wouldn't it?
Well.
If you, if you, because, because I, you know, I noticed on a, on a, an invoice sort of thing, that it's got your plot, then it's got these fees, that fees, and then it's got grave digging fees, and um so if they're they're marked down and that goes through the undertaker now, on their bill, then automatically, if they, if you put, if that goes up to three hundreds for argument's sake from the contractors, then the resident will automatically find that money anyway, won't it, because it'll automatically go on the bill, won't it?
At the moment, we're not charging any extra, we're still charging the fees that were agreed.
Yeah, so so currently, so currently, we've we've worked our budget um for next year on the basis that we're not increasing fees. This committee hasn't increased the burial fees, um so if there are any expenses that have gone up, grave digging being one, that we absorb in that overall fee, uh we will have to absorb the increase of thirty pounds, unless as a committee, we look to increase it. Or, as other councils uh do, they they don't take on board the grave digging um contractor. It's done through the funeral directors. So there is one, so there is one option, Jenny, that we can, we can talk and talk to our uh local funeral directors to see whether they want to undertake undertake this, and in fact, instead of increasing, we would decrease our burial fees in relation to the cost. In terms of the uh families, the buried family, they will, you know, they will have, there's no difference.
No, that's right.
It's either, the bills are either going to come from the funeral directors or the town council.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, uh uh um what I'm saying is, it's grave digging on on uh the invoice or the bill from the sem- uh from the undertaker, they have grave grave diggings as a separate thing. So it's all itemized to have on what you're paying.
But when they, when when the burial is at the town council, they, it's not shown on there, simply because we absorb those costs. If it was another town council and there's a nearby town council that do it through the funeral directors, then obviously in your bill from the funeral director, it would identify.
Copy of something, I don't know.
I I think with, you know, everyone's after pay rises, the cost delivery is going up. I think um perhaps the next meeting, I don't know if it'd be in the chair then, but the the next, yeah, we'll have a meeting. Um I think we need to have a look at a breakdown, is what what do the funeral directors think about taking it over? If they don't, we need to start increasing our costs because we don't make money on cemetery. And we need to, we can't keep this, um what's that word you use this year?
Absorb.
Absorbing, absorbing the cost year on year because we're going to find ourselves in trouble.
Yeah.
And one thing I don't want is to sit in a council meeting and saying, um the cemetery runs um a loss again, because we had this the other year. We we weren't keeping an eye on it, and I think the first year I took the chair, we made seven pounds. Oh, we were so pleased, we'd, we'd, I say we'd make it, because it all has to go back in, but we don't want to get into that situation again. Um councillor.
Yeah, uh David, you you mentioned about um other councils do it differently, and they don't include the uh the grave digging cost, I mean, is it the majority of councils who do it differently to us or?
No, it's not the majority of councils, but there are, there are one or two that we've, we've um we're aware now.
Yeah.
Uh because we've obviously, we talk to other councils all the time.
Right.
And we talk about various issues we've got, and one of them was that are you experiencing increases in this, that and the other? Grave digging is one of them, and a couple of the councils that were actually within that call said, we we don't even, we don't even deal with that. There are issues, in in fact, you know, yes, we could reduce the fees, um and no disrespect to the undertakers, the undertakers are a are a are a commercial operation, they would certainly outlay those costs to um the family, as a council, it's thirty pounds extra uh burial. I mean, are we in a position where we 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 cannot absorb that this year, or maybe we have to look at it for next year? People are experiencing a lot of increases and you may want to just.
And are there other questions if we don't do the grave digging ourselves, or are we less in control?
Absolutely, and that's the, that's my only concern, is it it doesn't necessarily mean that staff have got any less involvement.
Right.
Apart from Kerry perhaps of arranging that grave digging, but then again, the staff would have to make sure that they are digging the right plot, so they'd have to be there to, you know, that kind of thing, so I I I'm not sure at the moment.
I I think it's going going back, Kerry, look at it, bring it back.
Yeah.
And we said that the the best way to go, but what I don't want to do is, I don't want year on year losses, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Dennis.
Yeah, well, Dave asked a question, no, that's good, you've got that question first, but I do have another question. Are we still in the lower part of the costs for for burials, uh because we've always been in with other other councils and municipal burial grounds, we've always tended to be in the lower part of it, are we still there?
I believe we are, but I think Kerry wrote some more up to date reports.
Can we have a survey?
Yeah.
To find, thank you.
I've I've always pushed it too hard, Kerry, because I know you're the civic secretary as well, and it's a
Yeah, busy time.
Busy time for you, so, you know, just try your best and um if it gets stuck, just ask Dave, because he's not very busy.
Yeah, just just one other small thing, um there is a problem sometimes if you resist uh increases in fees. We have kept, we haven't increased them for a little while, um and the problem is that if you don't do it year by year.
Yeah.
Then you're certainly have a big challenge.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Yeah.
So I think we ought to be a bit careful there.
Absolutely.
See, me, I would put everything up every year by a little bit, because that's what you do at home, you think well, I've got to put a bit more away this year, because I know council tax is going to go up, I've got more gas.
Electors are taking gas.
Yeah, yeah, we, but you, you, once you hear about it, you you plan for it, don't you?
But we've already made a decision for this year, we were, we.
Well, we've made a decision in terms of um of our of our expenditure part of our budget, but um you can certainly make a decision to tweak the fees if you if you.
So we could, at the next meeting, we could.
We could tweak the fees next.
Fees if we're not restricted.
So in terms of an action, um Chair, uh Kerry and I, I will help Kerry. Kerry and I will research some of the other cemetery costs, and we'll also uh try and find out just how many in the sort of nearby facility outlay that, those duties to the funeral directors or.
As a committee, did we announce oh that we have kept the fees at a a a this year without an increase? We haven't made that public announcement, have we?
I don't think we have, so if we have the conversation next month, and then we.
Yeah, that will give us an opportunity, yeah, as long as we haven't announced it, then we go back on it, that's.
So that has to be on the agenda as a review.
Hmm, review, yeah.
Feature review.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
An- anything else on financial update, Dave, have you got any? No. So.
Try and go back to the.
Seven four eight, please.
Do I have that to the cemetery?
I I I was gonna go, committee officers update, but no. So we just go back to seven four eight stroke twenty one, I do remember asking Kerry, she would know, so off you go, Kerry.
Okay, so in twenty twenty one, we carried out a total of sixty eight internments, twenty eight were ashes, fifteen were burials in the old section, and twenty five were burials in the new section. As you're aware, um towards the end of November, we reached our limit of twenty five burials per year in the new section, so we had to temporarily suspend burials until January. We wrote to all the local undertakers to advise them, um it was a big concern to us, but um to date, we've had no complaints um about the temporary suspension or that any families were affected by it. Um so far this year, we had um one um baby's burial in the new section and one ashes internment, um we've also had one burial um so far in February. Um we've got one in the new section and two ashes internments booked in, and we've also got an ashes internment booked in for March as well.
Any questions? No? Yeah, we must apologize, I don't, um as as Kerry has said, we 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 did run out December, so there wasn't a lot we could do about it, we're 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 not gu- we can't govern
No.
Uh how many people can go in the cemetery, that's somebody else's roommate and we have to follow it. So thank you very much, is there anything else, Kerry?
No.
Right, so going back to to seven five O stroke twenty one, cemetery priorities, to discuss and agree the priorities and the budget for the cemetery projects. Well, as you all know, we had two, which was, one was the chapel toilets, and one was the the memorial sanctum, the sanctuary. Um going on from there, if you actually really digest your budget, you can see we cannot afford to do them. So I'm gonna hang on to Dave, but the decision will be at the end of this, chapel toilets or memorial.
So, so we are being pushed uh by um finance to try, each committee to try and determine what their critical uh project priorities are going into next year, they're finance have undertaken a process over the last, well, two years to start to revise and consolidate reserve um budgets. So uh for instance, um there used to be a guildhall complex reserve, there is no more, it's all been um consolidated into property repairs, so if that committee wanted to spend some money on with um improvements, et cetera, they would have to pitch for uh the monies out of that reserve uh project. And then once that's, once that happens, it's ring fenced for that period of that project, so you can utilize it to complete. So we do need to have a look at at what we want to do, and in the past, we've looked at two um two clear pri- uh projects, which are the chapel toilets. And I've called it the memorial sanctum, because I can't really pronounce the columnarium or what.
You just said it, you say, go on.
So um but we have discussed in the past that we, that out of our original uh reserve pot, we the priorities was to complete the workshop, which we, which we pretty much have. And there was uh reserve monies left over, and I think that is a uh sum of twelve thousand pounds that we were to commit to the chapel toilets, and then we started to talk about the memorial sanctum and how we were gonna um uh finance that, and we were looking into some costings to come back to, a business plan to come back to uh this committee. I've I've looked at the costs, and as we um discussed in a previous meeting in November, the costs are going astronomical in terms, we had a uh almost an ultimatum that if we didn't um confirm by December, and this was in November, the cost would rise to at least thirteen and a half thousand pounds. The costs now are running for that um thirty two compartment, that's ninety six urns that can go into uh that sanctum, um is about, with the groundwork, is about eighteen and a half thousand pounds. So if you divide eighteen and a half thousand pounds by ninety six, it's gonna be a phenomenal fee that they have to people have to be charged just to utilize that uh facility. And what it doesn't do, as we spoke about before, we haven't that I call it seed money, that that project money to actually build the first one, so then the business plan kicks in and the fees that we recoup, we build the next one as and when we needed it. So we do have to find that sum of money, and if we don't do it quickly, the prices will go up as they're going up almost monthly. So it gets to a point where you think, which one is the most feasible, is it chapel toilets that we want to do as a priority, or is it the memorial sanctum? Um now, we also looked at the memorial sanctum in terms of, we've got money to possibly put in the septic tank and all the all the utilities leading up and up to the back porch, so if I can just show you this picture. So basically, where you see the planter on the right hand side of the slide, that's pretty much where the septic tank would be um would be set into the ground, and then the utilities would be into the um the toilet uh facility, which would be just behind those iron gates, so obviously there wouldn't be iron gates, it'd be a toilet, it'd be a nice outdoor, et cetera. Um but, so we've got the money to probably do most of the groundwork, we just need to think about pitching for some additional money. Is this as our key priority to complete the uh the chapel toilets? Or we ditch this one and use the twelve and the additional money to um to do the memorial center. So that's the choice you need, from this meeting, what I'd like to do, I'd like the committee to do, is to provide a decision which one, either or, or a new one, whatever. or a new one, whatever. Um, but for me to go away and actually properly cost up and check that there are reserves that we may be able to utilise to do something, otherwise, we're always just gonna have hollow discussions about we've got some money but not enough to complete.
Council, I'll be honest.
Well, I'll be perfectly honest, I didn't expect the columbarium to take place, it should have, it should have been a couple of years ago when it was offered a, a cheaper play, a cheaper price, so, and money could have been bought in with that one, so, um, as time goes on, as you say, prices go up and it goes to the bottom of the pile again. The chapel toilets, um, been as well, we haven't had the public toilets over there for many, many years, and I think if you're gonna push with anything, it's gotta be the, the toilets anyway. Because that's, you know, people go there, especially when it's cold, you first of all, you wanna go, it's in there and stuff. So, yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd, you, you've got to stick to the first priority and that's chapel toilets.
I'm just sad about the other thing.
Yeah, well, I, I, I take the contrary, I hope you do this in, in that, uh, uh, to start with, the, uh, uh, have they, when there's a funeral, is there any facilities they can utilise at right now?
No.
So they have no, so that's an important thing. Now, I'm all for su- trying to support this, this project here because it, it, it's something that can generate some income, obviously, as you're saying, not as much as we hoped in the, in the past. And it, and, and, and it will help us to alleviate our, uh, our trouble with our burials and everything. Because it's above ground, it's not counted against us. So it will le- alleviate that problem, and I think it's an added feature to our cemeteries. And, and, and it will enhance our cemeteries to, to a great deal. But mostly, I think it's because, uh, it will allow us to generate more income in order to put back and to to build more of the same thing, you know?
My sentiments exactly, Dennis, but I think I've just conceded on the fact that
Yeah.
when the offer was, when it was available at a, a, a good rate and the money could have been made over these last couple of years, it was pushed to a back burner as most things.
We have to take what we've got now, I mean, realistically, and we'll come to a decision of which one the committee wants.
I, I can see Council's point of view. The, the only thing that, what persuaded me, because this, when Sylvia was on here, I showed her all these memorials and that's how long ago it was.
We went to Perry.
But I've act, I've acted sort of like back off because the memorial sanctum is not gonna make me enough money in the future to then come back and say, well, I moved that money there and I'm gonna put it back into the toilet, I'm not gonna have that. Be, be, because we don't earn enough, you know, we're, we're not council, that brings in loads of money because we have thousands of burials a year, we don't. So you're not gonna get that money back in, and if you do have a load of burials, it's still the cost of running them burials, isn't it? So I had to, I had to sort of like back down and agree with chapel toilets because I think there's nothing worse. They're going to a funeral, you could have come up from London, Essex, Birmingham, anywhere, and, you know, you're told to go to the loo, aren't you, and there's nowhere around there. You know, unless one of the workmen was there and they, that allowed us to loo, you, you, use theirs. There is no way we even go to the toilet, so, t- to me, we started off doing the chapel, let's, let's get that priority done. But as I say, it's over to yous, um, Dave.
Yeah, and in terms of, um, trying to improve revenue, um, I agree, uh, that the columbarium would, uh, if, if the costs were high, we would be able to make some money on that. But also, I think we were talking about, uh, increased use of the chapel, and without the toilets, that might, that become very difficult. Um, so I, I'm definitely coming down on the side, we've got to choose one or the other, I would go with the toilets. Um, but the other, another aspect of it would be as well, that, uh, we, we haven't got the money for either. We've got some money, which will, will go some way towards, uh, either of the projects. But, um, uh, yeah, if we're gonna find funding for the, or the rest of the funding, then, uh, you know, it depends what pots are available for the different types of thing, because the columbarium thing is completely different really to the toilets, so it might be that we've got some money in reserve, that we could use for one and not the other. So there's that aspect of it as well, but I'm in balance, I would be saying we've got to choose, uh, then between us.
I'm not saying we, we can take this off, that we, you know, whatever, whatever one you choose, you can leave it on the back burner. It won't disappear, we could still.
Yeah, so it's one we're gonna push forward.
The one that we've, we've got to go off, take to council.
I'd recommend that if, if we're not really going forward with this, I think then, then it's gonna be a spent force and it's never gonna be done. If we don't go forward with it now, it will never get done unless somehow somebody leaves us a money in their will or something. Um, so it's, it's a if and and but, I mean, the projects, you know, and, uh, I just think that we're living in a dream world if we think we're going to, if we do the toilets now, that sometime we're gonna come back to that, because with time we come back to it, it may have doubled in pricing and everything, so. With this one, it is a matter of e- e- either we do it or we don't do it, so.
Chris, I.
That's my opinion.
Uh, yeah, I'll come back to you Dave, I have an error from Chris, and I do, I do need all your opinions, because this is, is a big thing. And I know you've been on cemetery for a few years now, so.
I don't read the comments made earlier on, I also tend to agree with Dave, the fact that we're going to try and increase the use in the chapel. So therefore we need the facilities in the chapel. I do appreciate your comments, I mean, what you're saying is right, there is here.
So I'm going up in price.
It will go up.
I mean, if you, but so the toilet, if I like to ask.
How, how much that would cost, if you can, you've got your calculator, you can tell me.
You see, the thing is, by the time you've sold those, no, that's what I was just doing, there's certain, because I, I did have it on a sheet, and then I thought, I just can't, I just can't see how this works financially. It is.
Yeah.
But that's for one, that's for one urn.
For one urn.
There's thirty two compartments that you can put three urns in. So what happens if you don't put three urns in?
Yeah.
The, the, it pushes the price up, so I don't know Kerry, how, do you know off the top of your head how much an internment is? A normal internment in the, in the ground, yeah.
Hundred and seventy.
So basically, you know, that's a big, that's a big increase. And then by the time, that, how long would it take to fill that columbarium before you need the new one? We're talking about eighteen and a half thousand pounds, I've worked on twenty thousand pounds here at it, so obviously it's two hundred and eighty pounds, not. Um, but it could be, it could be a lot more than that by the time you get round to building the next one, which means your fees are I don't think it's ever gonna be perceived as an income generator. I think we look at it in terms of protecting and giving a viable alternative to our burial issues. So we've got a more environmentally friendly thing, that's a different argument.
Yeah.
Um, but as an income generator, not that we expect to make great income from our cemeteries, our cemeteries anyway. Um, it's, it's not, it seriously is not. I know in the last meeting, um, Chris mentioned, and he didn't like this sort of tower block type configuration. So maybe, you know, if this is still our reserve priority that we mustn't lose sight of, maybe we can look at the sort of, I think Barry St Edmunds have got these ground.
The wall.
Yes, you've got to put more groundwork in, but groundwork is not the most expensive component to this project. It's that thing that we're looking at.
Oh, I'm quite happy.
So maybe, maybe we have to explore Chris's option, and maybe we look at that for, you know.
Well, when we went to, when we went to bury, you come with us, didn't you?
Yes.
And in their, in their, um, for their ashes, it was like a bench.
Yeah.
They were like marble, weren't they, bench?
Yeah, there was too, too high, wasn't there?
And you can do, you, yeah, you can just get behind the lot and then you can build on it, and that's what we were looking at about three years ago. Is that kind of thing, because you could ju- it was so easy maintenance, it was a wipe over with a cloth, um, because it was like a marble stuff. And then you had the little doors and you could have two ash, two lots of ashes in there, so you actually bought the, the, the compartment.
Yeah.
And that, so, that kind of thing, and that's what we were saying, that was bought before the committee three, four years ago.
Yeah, but I think that, that's when the plans was, you went out, built that gate, then there was gonna be one, say, um, sitting area there and one there, but then that changed in the sitting, um, the year I was off.
It looked like a factory, it looked like a factory, they showed through, you know, it was terrible.
But I think, going back to the, our priorities, I now need you to really think and vote, and I will read one at a time, and please vote for what you want.
Can I just ask one more thing, because I asked the question within the team and we didn't have the answer, and actually, Chair, you spoke about this when I spoke to you yesterday. Are we only looking at these chapel toilets to be used for funerals? Or are we gonna open them when the cemetery is open? Are they gonna be open to the public to use them, or are we only gonna open them for like Christmas, um, a Christmas memorial event or a funeral or something like that, or we shut them down? Because again, the stingy, sprout-like person I am, um, this is an awful lot of money just to open up some toilets for with respect, a sh- a limited amount of funerals a year.
Yeah, I, I did ask this Dave, of, of Dave, the simple reason is, we all know, the cemetery is a cut through. And I wouldn't mind stopping that, because some people just like walking through, don't they, throwing one into the air, you know, it's a nice sunny day. Um, if they're aware that there is a public toilet in there, would it get misused?
Of course.
And what, what would this committee want to do? Would you want to say, right, we'll give it six months? If the toilet is not, um, wrecked in any way after leaving it open all day long, then it can remain open. If we start seeing that, that it's getting wrecked, we'd only open it when the chapel's in use or there's a funeral. Because that, you know, you've got to think, it's like Cage Lane, we don't Cage Lane. Do we wanna actually keep doing it and do it and do it? No, we want it to maintain, we want the toilets in our town to be maintained properly. So that'd be a decision, you want that decision along with this one?
No, no.
No, that, that, that's, but it's something to be aware of in the future with the toilets.
I, I, I agree on that one, because I'm go, I'm not gonna say Ca- Cage Lane's in the town. Take the bus station toilets, even though it's a busy area, they get abused, their toilets.
Yeah.
And, and I, my other bugbear is about the contract on that one, but that's besides the point. You've got a cemetery there, and if them toilets are open continuously, while the cemetery's open, you will get them abused, they will be, there's no ifs, ahs and buts about it. It's an off the road site, no, but it's not visible from the main road where the to- uh, toilets are going. And you are gonna have some people that decide that they wanna do things in there that maybe is not, they can't do anything, if you know what I mean, you know, drugs, there, there're needles and that, I've gotta say, there's, there's gotta be.
Wait and see, isn't it?
But the thing is, you've got, you, while I'm saying put the toilets forward, that is something I never thought of, to be honest. Do, do you, do you have a, and then you look at the toilets that were on the, on the, the other toilets, the old ones, and I say that, oh, I know they've been shut for donkey's years now, but it was because they were getting damaged because of the use of them, uh, and we could see the result on that. Yeah, so what do you do? I personally think, well.
Well, I think we need to give them a trial, Dennis.
Well, it looks like we've already decided on the, on the conversation what's going on.
About if we did have toilets.
But the thing is, if we do, we already have antisocial behaviour in the cemetery. You know, we have people doing, uh, stealing things, we have people, um, I came across a couple, a couple of years ago, um, coupling in the cemetery, and, um, we have drug taking in the cemetery. And giving them an opportunity to go, have an enclosed space to do this, is gonna be, that's one they take. Um, I don't know, I like the idea of having the toilets, especially for funerals, but it would be nice if it was open all the time, but it's a risk and it, and it'll be more costs for us.
Yeah.
No matter what we do, it's gonna, it, it, more costs for us all the time, so.
Uh, yeah, on the, on the toilets issue and the, um, maintenance, um, they're, a- a- aside from, um, improper use of the toilets or vandalism, uh, we still have to think about the regular maintenance of them, I mean, the cleaning. And so if they are gonna be opened, uh, full time, or when the cemetery is open, then they will have to be cleaned every day, maybe twice a day. Um, so that's a cost and something we need to factor in. Um, but if they're only gonna be used for when the chapel's in use, for instance, or when there's a funeral there, um, then that, the, the cleaning requirement will very much reduce, so, uh, that's just another aspect. And, um, going back to the columbarium, um, I think we just need to keep an eye on the, the products that come onto the market, because there may be a lower cost one that we see, and I remember we talked about bench type ones, which will be lower cost because we're buying less units, basically. Um, but, um, there may, there may be some other products that come in, that come in at a lower cost, so need to keep an eye on that one.
Yeah, going back to the, the chapel toilets, uh, would staff clean them every morning?
Well, funny enough, when I asked, when I asked some of the staff what their thoughts would be, because, you know, I understand all the points that have been made. I was surprised that, um, that one of our staff members was, was really pro keeping them open.
Hmm.
And he said, well, when he opens it, he would open the toilets, he would check that there's nothing sort of, you know, and he would do so when, when, when he closed the gates, yeah, there's a long period of time between, between the opening and closing. Um, but he seemed, he seemed quite, yeah, keen to do it, because, I mean, funny enough, when I went up and took some of these pictures, um, it was at half past eight in the morning, and there's lots of mums and children that use that to walk through, you know.
Yeah, to school.
So, but again, you know, if it's not kept clean and tidy, a mum wouldn't wanna take a child into that, into that, um, toilet if there was needles and things like that there, so we do need to understand the maintenance and cleaning of them, but I was, you know, I was pleasantly surprised that the staff were actually in favour of
Oh, right.
of something, so perhaps we could possibly not have it publicised too widely. Because people who use the cemetery regularly will get to know it's open, we'll put notices on our notice board and things like that. Yes, I understand, Dennis, that there is antisocial behaviour up there, so they will get to know it.
Yeah.
But maybe we just do it for a trial period, um, and then.
Probably bring this idea for a trial period.
I think we should have a vote on what we're gonna do first, and once we finalize the idea, maybe probably a toilet up there, then we can take that further.
Can I just make my comment on the public toilets? I mean, I, I think it's a real plus, we can all find negatives with anything.
Yeah, of course.
We have to move forward, we cannot let the actions of the funeral destroying the, the, you know, the majority.
Yeah.
So my, my, we should drive it, that's a, between six months and see what happens. If we.
If we.
Yeah, first of all, let's agree and then we can move forward on that.
So I'll read them out one at a time.
The final complete, so I can consider.
The votes for chapel toilets.
I've got one, two, three.
Not me.
Two. Did you not vote?
No.
So it's two, right now.
Oh, sorry, I thought David voted.
One, two.
I thought you had your hand up, so.
No.
A one, two.
Yeah.
One, two.
Uh, the more, pardon.
Who's?
Two for the chapel toilets.
I don't vote till the end.
Okay.
Memorial s- sanctum.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for the memorial sanctum, but I'd like, am I voting for that or am I voting for the wall?
No, no, you're voting, you're voting for a priority, one priority.
Yeah, okay, I'm going for a priority, yes.
Sorry. Have you voted yet?
Yeah. He's voted for toilets.
Sure, that was true.
Yeah, I knew I was lost for toilets.
Dennis has voted for, for memorial.
Yeah.
Um, you've voted, you're abstaining on both.
I am.
She's abstaining on both.
Yeah.
I'm going for toilets, so you've got three for toilets and one for
Yeah.
memorial sanctum.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's, um, carried forward.
Uh, now, do we discuss further what we do with this toilet?
No, because it's not done yet. So I think.
So now we know it's, now it's no, we know it's the main priority, what we'll do is we'll try and firm up, um, uh, the, the plan to
Okay.
and, and we bring that back next month.
Now we've got plans.
So I'm gonna resolve it, I know David.
There is, there is one thing, I don't wanna put heavy costs on, but can a toilet be disabled, uh, disabled friendly?
Yeah.
Uh, so it's just one main toilet, but it is disabled friendly, I just think, because sometimes they put in very low.
I think you have to make them accessible now.
Yeah.
But, but the toilets are so low, people can't get off. Because, you know, they're disabled.
It's accessible, get on.
I'll make you a second.
My toilet.
Now we've decided that, can we look into the price and get them more?
So what, so what we can do is, as a, as a, as another action, is to look at alternatives.
Yeah.
And maybe we can do some wider research and, and maybe, um, I, I can ask the town clerk to go out to the wider town councils to, um, to see what they do and what they've done.
I would second your.
As, as things move on, I'm sure there's. As, as things move on, I'm sure there's gonna be, um, you know, I know this is gonna sound horrendous, but you can get composite plastics and things like that, which look like stone. Um, that are gonna be, I mean, you can get big benches now, picnic benches and that made out of that, which again is environmentally friendly, uh, but it's substantially cheaper.
Dave?
I thought you were gonna say what I was gonna say, but you didn't. And I was, I was gonna say, can we look at composting toilets? But you were talking about composite. Um, because although good people think, oh, what a smelly thing, they actually aren't. And the technology is quite, that would give us a really good degree for insurance. So it'd be worth looking at that. And also you wouldn't have the, um, you wouldn't have to have the, the.
Septic tank.
Oh, the, oh, the septic tank. The, the other thing about the septic tank, I know that, uh, when we put those two bits in or two tenders where we, one of them had some work for the other one. And I've got feeling the septic tank was part of the yardworks one. Uh, I don't know if you wanna check that in the town.
Uh, I'll have to check that.
I have been, I've got, I've got, I've got a feeling the groundwork and putting the septic tank in might well have been on the, on the yardwork one. And then the chapel, the tenders just for the toilets to connect up to that.
I'll check, I'll check.
I would have checked in that, because then some of the work would be done, but.
You're not composting toilets, yes.
So you're costing up now, David, I think it's going to be, thank you.
So moving on to seven five one stroke twenty-one, cemetery correspondents to receive an update on any correspondence or complaints that we've had since the last meeting, Kerry.
Okay, um, I had three people complaining, um, about their headstone in the memorial that was laid down because it had been staked and then obviously no one had contacted us. So then obviously it was agreed to have them laid down. So some people came back about that. So I've gone back to them and explained why we do what we do and, um, what the issue is with the stone as well. What needs to be done to make it stable. Um, and then I also had a lady ring up complaining that we've removed our headstone when actually we hadn't, it was still there, so.
Gone to the wrong place.
So the ones that we'd laid flat, we couldn't contact the people because they weren't the deed holders.
No, that's right.
Right, yeah, it, it.
I, I had a member of the public.
I feel sorry for you, it happened to deal with people because people, you know.
I had a member of the public come to me and say that we'd laid a, the headstone, but she's very nice about it. But I said she had to contact Kerry and I'll say we did that done. So I just pushed it to Kerry.
But do, do you not find that a lot of people, because it's a family member, i.e. nanny or whatever, whoever, a, a, a family member, that they actually think, because it's nanny or whoever in there, that it's theirs as well? They don't realise about this piece of paper that.
Yeah, they just assume it's.
It, because it's family, that they've, they've got the right to discuss it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, um, thanks for dealing with them, Kerry. It must have been hard for you. Um, seven five two stroke twenty-one is committee officers' update to update since the agenda was released. Uh, nothing. Um, commu- community engagement, any community, community engagement we need.
Yeah.
Um.
I can't get credit for the workshop, can I?
No. No, you can't get credit for the workshop.
I know another councillor who could.
Never, we've got your leaflets round for elections, you're on there, aren't you?
There were, we haven't got any other business, because we're not allowed any other business, but there, there was one thing that, that sprung to mind. And it was under the actions, does people remember the last meeting? We discussed doing the pond and I think that's a health and safety issue. Right, so the, the edging of the pond is still hasn't been slabbed. So the mud is falling in and if you think somebody got too near that edge and that all collapsed in there, you know, and it could be a child. Now, um, there, there's two things. One, we need, we need to ask officers to sort it out, get an edging for the pond. And two, is to put a note on the gate to say, um, there is a pond in this area. Please, uh, be, beware of your children. Beware, you know.
Supervise your children.
Please supervise your children because, you know, you could, you, you, you must have heard over the years that a child can drown in a puddle, you know? So I think we need to be, um, a bit more cautious on, on that. But is it all right, is, is it all right? I propose that we could keep that as the action plan, that we need the pond done, especially as the summer comes on. People, all those guys sitting there never sandwich.
Yeah, I'll be happy with that.
You know, are, are we doing that under health and safety? Because it's not on the agenda, so we have to find a place to do it.
The slide, the slide that you see on the wall, the bottom right-hand corner, has, uh, got some of the, um, slabs that we took from, um, the memorial square when we did the extension. So we, we have some of the materials that we can do that job with. So it's not gonna be too costly. I did speak to, um, to Nick, uh, and I did convey, um, Chair's thoughts about now, now we're nearing the better weather and spring, that little memorial garden, which's got some nice little benches in there, they may, it may well start to get used. And the last thing we wanna do is, I believe, um.
An accident.
Not, not being funny, it should have been done when the pond was done.
And just to say, there is a load of slabs there, do you, in King's End's garden?
So I'm sure we've got lots of materials, but it's not just slabbing round the sides.
No.
It's also, uh, putting a grill across it to stop them.
Are those slabs from King's End's garden, are they Stanley Ford or are they Tepford Town Council?
The Tepford Town Council.
Are they?
Well, where was Stanley Ford took the slabs from?
I don't know. I don't know why they're there.
We still have time.
You just told me that there's loads of slabs there.
Well, yeah. So anyway, meeting closed. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Are we charging Tepford Town Council storage of those slabs?
Quite a bit in there because there's some walls and red, yeah?
They should be.
They are, yes, they should.